The Olathe Public Schools Board of Education Meeting, November 6, 2014. And we have a special board clerk here tonight. Deb Madden is with us and I get the honor of sitting by such a lovely helper here. We're glad you're here and we will miss Joy, but it's a nice treat to have you. Would you like to call roll?
Sure. Mrs. Falter?
Here.
Mr. Shear? Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McHugh?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Pollan?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Is that it?
Mr. Shear had an exciting event tonight that he's just gonna miss a little. He'll be here as soon as he's done. Let's say our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have some special guests here. Many, I'm sure, but three that I know of that are, we're really glad to have. Girls, will you stand up? We have Sabrina Brooklyn with two N's and Dominique. They are from Shawnee Mission North and they're here to sit in for at least 45 minutes. But I told them, you know, you're missing the action if you leave early, so you never know. Girls, welcome and go change the world, okay? Thank you. Okay, it is American Education Week and we have a presentation by Kalen Kendall and some amazing teachers that Kalen will introduce. Thank you.
Good evening. Being November, we're here once again to celebrate National Education Week and, excuse me, American Education Week. And I have, as you said, a couple of teachers that I had lined up to come in and speak to you a little bit, as well as a video. One of those teachers, Angie Powers, from Olathe Northwest, was not able to be with us because she has a daughter who got sick. And so she couldn't be with us tonight. But I do have Kim Pausik, which is a third grade teacher from Madison Place, and she's going to speak to you just briefly.
I will speak very briefly. I just wanted to give you a little history about American Education Week. It has been around since 1921 and it was a joint effort between the NEA and the American Legion. And it was started because they were concerned with our military, our young recruits not being literate and not being physically fit. And so they wanted to bring awareness and the importance of education to the forefront. And so those two organizations joined together and that's how we have American Education Week. We're gonna be showing you this short video. It was done by Anna Lynn Morris from Olathe North High School and a couple of her students. And it's just a short video, but just shows you some great things that are going on here in the Olathe School District. So, thank you.
All the teachers are really nice.
They're motivated and they're polite and they're very courteous and, you know, they're hard workers.
They're really helpful. Whenever I ask questions, they always answer them thoroughly. They do a good job of explaining.
They make sure they walk you through the process so that you're not just blindly turned into something.
Overall, I'm very impressed.
They're always trying to work towards your success in school.
Everybody in the building, from the principals to the teachers to the parents, the librarians, custodians, the people working in lunchrooms, everybody has the same commitment to excellence.
They make your success their top priority.
I love the passion that our teachers have for education and that they're able to look at each student as an individual and see what they're capable of and tailor that student's education to what they need.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was very nice of you to allow the ECOM program to do that for you and plug in. So, thank you. They did a great job. Okay, we have a presentation by John Hutchison, Energy Management Program Information.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to report after our first year under the Energy Conservation Program. I have a few guests with me this evening. First of all, we have two energy specialists that work in the district for us, Jeff Pruitt and Jerry Novacek. If you two would stand please or wave. They also have with them from Synergistic, Tim Sturgeon, who will help, they'll all three help me answer any questions you might have at the end of the presentation. But I'd like to kind of capsulize what's happened in the past year first. I thought I'd start with just explaining what are Jeff and Jerry's roles as energy specialists. They're very busy, kind of night and day guys. They perform about 20 to 25 unoccupied and occupied audits each week. Since they've joined us, they've done over 2,600. That means they go when there's lots of kids and teachers and staff in the building and see what kind of energy savings are there. And they're there at 2:00 in the morning to kind of see what's going on with our units when nobody's there. Is there something that we can make some inroads on? They participate in a lot of training programs, a lot of one-on-one assistance from Synergistic staff. We've had over 88 visits from engineering staff and other consultants with the company. And they create a very close working relationship with our HVAC lead in tweaking our systems and adjusting for various events and understanding how a particular building might react to different environments. It's not an exact science where you just set the thermostat across the district and everything just works out perfectly. You have to understand the age of the equipment and try and keep that comfort level there. They do all of the mechanics behind the software as far as inputting all of our utility bills. And they're just responsible for developing that culture of saving energy. The primary goals of the program are really, first and foremost, always strive to maintain or if we can, improve the comfort level and safety. I know safety sounds like a strange thing. How can hot or cold be safe? It's more in the watering. If you don't water a field, it becomes very hard and the injury to students. So, there's a safety component. Then, obviously, a close second, the reason the program's in place, is to try and save dollars. And that is really done through eliminating of energy waste, creating positive proactive approaches with our staff to always be energy conscious and create that culture. I'm happy to report that in the first 12 months of the program that we have an energy savings or avoidance of about half a million dollars. That's about 8.2%. We began the program in August and this is a measurement through July. If we break that down kind of month by month, if you recall when the board approved this program, there was a Quick Start program. We didn't do great out of the gates. The Quick Start period is really where the district tries to jumpstart the program while we're searching for those two energy specialists. We did not, as you can see, actually, our consumptions went up in that period as we were trying to secure them, did not push it out hard enough. So, we've kind of re-energized this year to really try and get staff engaged in this process. About the time of the end of the Quick Start period is when Jerry and Jeff joined and you can see, we started to have savings. And the most significant savings really comes in the summer. We are predominantly an electric district. 80% of our consumption happens in electricity. Shutting down schools in the summer, really watching the events, making sure we don't heat, air condition the entire high school, just this weight room if we have a team in there or we have a camp going on. That's where we can make a lot of inroads in our breaks. It kind of works on a three-legged stool. We really focus on when our buildings are empty, shut them down as much as we can. Then it's really about technology. Can we shut the technology down when people are not there? And lighting is the third large one that, and I'll talk about transitional lighting program in just a moment. If we break down that savings further, if we look at just the electric comparison, you'll see that three bars in each graph. One's the usage on the left side and we have cost on the right side. The way we do the measurement is we've established a baseline. They looked at before they came, what did that year before look like? What was our consumption? What was our cost? And then based on the square footage, if you recall, we're a growing district, so we add square footage every year. What would be the anticipation? How much consumption would we have per square, if we had that additional square footage? And then it's a comparison to what was the actual consumption and actual cost. If you'll notice there, even though we added Millbrook, tech support, added on to food production and had a couple additions to classrooms, and I know they're under construction in this period, but they're all being billed to us while they're under construction, we actually lowered our consumption. So, we added square footage, but lowered electric consumption. The unit cost goes up, the rate still increases, as you can see, 8.4%. But we want to keep those kilowatt hours down and prevent additional consumption. Natural gas, similarly, we had avoidance of about $96,000 there. And then with regards to water, another consumption item we watch, we were fortunate this year kind of on two fronts. Had a lot of rain this summer and we had a lot of turf construction, so we didn't have to water the dacks. Those types of improvements are filtered out of the program. There's a bit of a lag time. We have not filtered out the turf projects yet till they're complete so we can completely measure how much should we back out of the baseline. And the way we do that is, let's use the turf for an example. We know there'll be a study of exactly how much less water do you have to use for that acreage? The lower the baseline year, as if that turf had always been there, so that there's no credit given for a larger gap than should have been there. Same goes for if we replace a heating and cooling unit or do window replacements. We're continually, each billing cycle, adjusting out any change we've made to the physical plant so we can really get down to what's the exact savings. Same thing with degree days. If the temperatures are different between the years, that adjustment is made as well. And then we arrive at, okay, this is truly, if we can get as close to apples to apples, this is how the consumption changed in the savings that we incurred. As you saw, the summer is where we really ramped up and in that last four months made up almost three quarters of the savings in that first year. And we want to repeat that in each break and get stronger. We had a lot of construction going on this summer, which is not an efficient process. We're hopeful as we get out of this construction mode in so many of our elementaries, we can use concepts such as team cleaning to where we can load up on staff, clean a building, literally shut it down for the summer, move to the next one so that we can make inroads there. Takes a lot of people involved, anywhere from the board down to staff, community, a lot of help from Operations Service Center. Kurt Fisher spends a lot of time monitoring our units and making adjustments and meeting with Jeff and Jerry to try and keep energy consumption to a minimum. For the coming year, our focus is really on a couple fronts. Something called Transitional Lighting Plan. We used to kind of light up the building and as we cleaned, we'd turn off the lights and you kind of, at the end of the night, you know where you're at. When it's all dark, we're done. Doesn't have to work that way. Turn on this wing, clean the wing, shut it down, go to the next one. It's a Transitional Lighting Plan. And try and get the academic wing shut down as quickly as possible because most of your activities are happening in the multipurpose rooms or in the gymnasiums or the cafeterias in the elementary school. So, you work your way back down. And that helps a lot on the lighting plan. Provide event scheduling at 13 secondary schools. We, I know Mr. Parker commented on one of the software agreements we have is SchoolDude. SchoolDude is a facility scheduling software and a work order software system. They have a module that talks to our heating and cooling units. Basically, if a school schedules the gym for two hours, they used to have to submit a work order and ask for energy. Now, they talk to each other. Air conditioning comes on for the gym for the event and then shuts down at the end. That takes a great communication plan between these two gentlemen and schools as you tweak that, hey, you reserve that for the band and it doesn't seem like you've been there all week. So, that's where that communication with staff to narrow that unused time. We want to provide the comfort, but we also want to make sure that people think about the scheduling, follow back up with their front office staff about, hey, I'm not gonna be in that space, so turn it off. Meanwhile, they have a close relationship with custodians. If nobody's in that large space, they get a text. They have the ability to go in and shut the systems down in the event that somebody hadn't made that communication. Really working hard this year, as I said, we kind of put this on autopilot. We had this program for 20 years and we needed a bigger push with our staff to re-energize them and have them understand what we're doing. And that's working out really good. We've had individual meetings with buildings and they're coming up with their own plans and a little bit of competition going on. Now that we have a year's data, they were not competing amongst themselves, but against themselves. Did I improve over last year? So, we have a very competitive workforce, which helps this program a lot. Working with district leadership and just really communicating that we don't want to waste energy, not just to save money, but also just to be green. With that, I would be happy, I'm sure you have questions about the program. I'd welcome them to the podium and we can try and answer anything I'd like to ask.
Questions?
I have a question. So, John, you mentioned that we saved money even with Millbrook and tech coming on. They weren't fully operational though till this fall. So, will we see a bump up now that those buildings are fully staffed and people are in there all the time?
You'll see somewhat of a bump, but I just want to remind you, both of those buildings take longer than a year to construct and we put a meter on those buildings and we're being billed for that energy and it's not very efficient when the walls aren't in and all those workers are in there using a lot of tools. So, in some respects, I haven't studied this, it could even go down depending on the timing of where they were in the construction.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sturgeon, could you refresh our memory on how we're compensating the synergistic as regards to?
Very good point. Any measured savings that we have for the first five years, we split 50/50. The two gentlemen who serve as the energy specialists are paid out of Synergistic's half. So, they work very closely with us. They look like our employees, but they are paid by Synergistic.
And that's why you're very careful to point out, like the turf, the water savings, that's not part of the dollars we split.
That's correct. It's really focusing in on consumption.
Great.
So, the savings that is represented here, we're getting half of that?
That's correct.
We didn't put any money upfront?
We did not.
Okay. So, everything is coming out of, in other words, whatever we save, that's how we're compensating?
Correct.
Synergistic, right?
Save or avoid. I just want to be very clear.
It happens at the end of five years?
At the end of five years, we have the option of hiring these two individuals. We do not split the savings any further. Similar when Bob Courtney was on staff for about 15 years, just monitoring, keeping that program, keeping up with training to make sure we don't slide back away into non-energy conserving habits.
So, they have motivation to find lots of energy savings?
They do.
Other question?
Most of it. Give me some examples of what we've done to save water and sewer costs?
Water and sewer costs? Yeah, really, there isn't a proactive approach on that. It's mainly that turf and rain. On the electric and the gas, it would be the utility issues, but not a lot of proactive things on the water consumption.
Turf, we're giving them credit for saving water even though we installed the?
No, that will be credited off. We are unable to measure it at this point. So, that savings, that savings number may get adjusted down. Each month, we look back, once a project's completed, and we haven't completed the full turf, we'll look at that cycle. How much do we save next year as we're not watering those turfs? And we'll adjust back to, back through the year and we'll get a large credit for the turf.
Okay, but once again, we're showing that we're saving money. If we're taking the turf out of it, I'm looking for other savings besides the turf.
On the water?
Because we're showing that we're saving.
One area where we did save was?
Need to have you come to the microphone.
We were like, we had 24 schools this summer that we were working on. They were under construction and a number of those schools were closed. Essentially, there was no, the custodians couldn't actually work in there and there were savings through water and sewer on both of those just because of the sequence and the way that we had to operate the schools while they're under construction. And the others, I?
So, basically, the $68,000 that we're showing here, that's not credited Synergistic because part of that savings was for turf?
That's correct. Part of that will have to come out. On the heating and cooling, we've got most of the adjustments in there for the equipment. The turf piece, we do not on the water yet.
Any other questions? Mr. Hutchison, so the savings of over $500,000, what account would that have come out of?
Operating, a general fund.
And so, our savings then stays in that account, right?
Correct.
Does that impact our classrooms?
It does.
That was a good thing, I would think.
It is.
Dollars to the classroom, or at least dollars available to. Okay, thank you very much. Nothing else?
John, another question that I had. So, that money that's backed out, it's still money that we have saved. We just don't have to share in that savings with Synergistic.
That's correct. Very good point.
Yeah, we're still getting that savings.
Good point. Nothing else? Okay, thank you, guys. Thanks for being here tonight. All right. So, we're moving along to Student Independence Initiative. And then Dr. Fassulo?
Fassulo.
Fassulo. I knew I was gonna betray. Forgive me. I had it in my brain and then it was gone. It's all right. This is fine. This one starts right here. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and talk to you about our student independence initiative that we have going on in the district right now. With our school district's vision statement of students prepared for their future and also the Kansas College and Career Ready Standards, student independence has become very important to our students with special needs. We are looking at what their goals are beyond high school. And so, we're trying to plan for their needs in the area of future education, in the area of employability skills, in the area of independent or semi-independent living. And so, we needed this focus so that we were all moving in the same direction, which is sometimes hard to do in a big district like this. And so, you're probably asking, you know, what do we mean by student independence? So, I'm gonna show you a short video clip so you can kind of see what we have shown to our parents, to our gen ed staff, our sped staff, some of our administrators. Okay. So, in the spring of 2012, we gathered a group of educators, special educators, general educators, building administrators and district administrators to start taking a look at what the district is doing to promote student independence. And through that process, it was a semester-long process, many long meetings, we decided that it was something that we wanted to pursue. And so, we decided that we're gonna have this as a focus of training and communication throughout the district. And so, last year, we started this. So, really, when we're talking about what student independence is, it's the best match between para educator support or adult support in the classroom for our students with disabilities and very much tailored to each student's individual needs. So, we know that there are some students that are always gonna have to have full-time para educator support. But then there are others that with the right supports put into place other than a para educator, they could be successful. And that's the goal for our students by the time they reach high school and beyond because like the video said, there's no para educators once they get to the college level or in life really after school. So, what we did, this is how we promoted the student independence at the district level. We tailored a four, or developed a four-part training series that we had available for our gen ed staff, our administrators, our sped staff and our para educators. And in that four-part series, we did last year and now we're on, doing the series again this year, we're on part two of the series. We looked at roles and responsibilities of staff, all staff, working with special educators or special education students. We looked at instructional supports for special education students. We've looked at helping versus hovering because we have that support there for the adult support for the students to help. The hovering is not necessarily a positive thing and so, we wanted to look at how we are doing that and what we could do to promote the helping versus the hovering. And then also, how do we fade out adult support? If a student comes into our district and in first grade, we put adult support on their IEP, how over time are we gonna fade that so that they become more independent? And so, that was one of the things that we've done at the district level. We've also promoted co-teaching training. We've had an outside consultant come in and work with our staff on co-teaching models. It's a new educator focus, so our special services instructional resource teachers work with our new staff throughout the school year to get them on the student independence bandwagon with us. And it's also a focus at every one of our professional learning days. We take portions of it to talk about where are we now? Where do we need to go? And how are we gonna get there? We have monthly communications with all of our special services staff that I also put into the source, which is our administrative staff's newsletters. And I have it as a focus for our parent group, our site council group, where we talk about student independence from the parent's perspective every time we get together. We did a new parent seminar for our parents this fall so that they could see what are some things that they can do if we're promoting student independence at school? What can they do to help us by supporting students and their independence at home? So, what have we done to promote this at the building level? We have special services coordinators who spend a lot of time out in the buildings. And so, they are facilitating conversations and discussions with teams on how they are going about making students more independent and what the process is from going from a full-time para support to fading that support off. We also have done some district, some building level trainings where we've gone out into buildings to see what their overreliance on para educators are and help them build a plan on how to address that. And we also have discussions with buildings and with teams and with parents every time we meet on a student's IEP, which is annually, but also as those kids transition from early childhood to elementary, elementary, middle, middle to high school. So, that we're not waiting until the kids are in high school before we address this independence issue because by then, it's too late and there's too many school deficits to try to address if we wait until high school. And there's too many skill deficits to try to address if we wait until high school. And of course, at the individual student level, we have their student IEPs that we do annually where we talk about the adult support that they need in order to be successful. We do an assessment of students' independent skills. And we look at the skill deficits that they may have that are keeping them from being as independent as we would like them to be. And we also provide guidance and some training to para educators on how to best support students in the classroom. So let's step back. Let kids try before you automatically provide them with assistance. You let students sometimes have to struggle a little bit to build some resilience. And that has helped to let paras know that they aren't just glued to that student, but they can help be responsible for all the students in the classroom. Now, the hard part of this is sustaining our momentum. What we're doing currently is we have developed a tool called the Student Independence Profile. And it's a tool that teams can use to look at where in the school environment does a student need support? What activities do they need support with? And we have a team of teachers who are testing this right now, who will come back to us in December, will revise the tool, and then we'll train all staff at the January Professional Day on this. We also have two speakers coming in this summer conference. Dr. Richard Villa, who did our initial co-teaching training. And he's gonna provide more support to our teachers who want to go to this model. And then also, we're having Dr. Michael Jean-Greco out of the University of Vermont. He is with Project Evolve. And all of his work is with para educators and helping buildings and teams to think of alternatives to over-reliance on adults for students with special needs. One of the first thi- oops. I went too fast today. One of the first things we did when we started this was we had graphic design, create this logo for us. And we think that this pretty much epitomizes what we're trying to do is to prepare our students with special needs for future independence. So, questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, and I, several comments. But I thank you for doing this. I think the goal of most special educators is to assist children in being successful. And sometimes that fosters prompt dependency. So I appreciate this re-looking at independence. And then the second thing I would say is that, given state assessments and other expectations, we've had increased attention on academic performance. I think sometimes minimizing skills related to adaptive skills and that very much are needed for independence. So toileting and dressing and all of those things, as well as communication. It's pretty difficult to be successful if you don't have some adequate form of communication. So I appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
Quick question. Help me understand. Give me a questionnaire version of the co-teaching.
A co-teaching model? When you have a general educators in the classroom, they are considered the content expert. The special education teacher is considered the access expert. How can we help students access the curriculum? So when you put them in the same classroom to teach together, when you have students with special needs in the classroom, it addresses everyone's need and it reduces the need to pull those students out into a different environment other than where their regular ed peers are. So it's the same content, we just have two certified adults in there. One helping kids to access the curriculum that need it, and the other one teaching the content.
So it's different than a para in the room?
It is, very different. Usually when we do a co-teach model, we do not have a para in the classroom at the same time. Unless it is a severely multiply-involved student who also needs so much support that they can't be successful without that. We really, we wanna still continue to look and are responsible for looking at what students need. So we really can't go to one size fits all model because, you know, that's not individualized to the needs of students.
With the, I'm asking these questions because I don't understand all this.
It's okay.
The specialists in the room, how many of these do we have? And are the paras, I know the number of paras we have, and we surely can't afford that many of the certified, what was the title you gave them?
Our certified special services teacher. You know, and-
How do we share them? How do we allocate them? How do we?
It is, and some of our high schools and middle schools, their schedules are built, our special ed teachers, their schedules are built around having an hour to be in a classroom where they're working with general and special ed students at the same time. So it's really scheduling issues. It doesn't require any more staff than what we already have. It's just offering the full continuum of services a little bit differently than we have in the past.
Are these, is our goal for them to be independent by the time they graduate or sometime be independent before they graduate?
If they could be independent before they graduate, that's exactly what we want. And again, it's so based on what a student needs. We know that there are gonna be some students who are gonna require full-time adult support all the way through school because their needs are so significant. But there are other students who may in kindergarten, first, second grade require more support that we can look at. Fading that support so that they don't need that assistance as they get into the middle years and high school years.
Thank you.
I love that you included the parent seminar. Because that was, to me, I was thinking, I hope there's the partner piece, you know, so it doesn't change as soon as they get home. How many attended? Was it well-attended?
I think we had 25 parents come that night. Then on the special services site council, I have an additional 10 parents that are separate from, there were a couple of them that did attend the seminar. But, so they're such good ambassadors to what we're doing in special services and meeting needs of students that when we did some training at our first site council meeting, a mom was leaving to go to her son's IEP meeting. And she was like, oh my gosh, I'm the person who is pushing, pushing, pushing to keep as much para support on my junior in high school's IEP. And now I have to, I have to get there and change this because this is not what's best for him. So it was, and we have our next meeting tomorrow, so I'm anxious to see how that all worked out for her.
Well, she was advocating for her son in the best way she knew how.
Exactly.
How would she know to do otherwise? So I love this. How are we inviting parents? Are the IEP team members reaching out to?
And I think that, you know, parents are always a part of their student's IEP. And so the biggest part of the discussions are happening at that IEP table when parents meet, or once, sometimes more than once a year. And so we are ensuring that this conversation happens at every meeting. I think in the past, we got a little bit complacent that when we put adult support on a student's IEP, we had to say, okay, this is what they got last year, this is probably what they need again this year, instead of really taking a look and saying, where can we make this student a little bit more independent? How can we push them and make the parents part of that discussion?
Fabulous. Other questions? Dr. Fassulo, thank you very much. Okay, we have a few minutes. Let's go to the action consent agenda. Items 5.01 through 5.07. Anything to pull out? If not, entertain a motion?
I would move to approve consent agenda items numbered 5.01 through 5.07 as presented.
Second.
Is that, thank you. Okay. All right, Ms. Madden, I have a motion by Dr. Daniels, seconded by Brent McKeon. And do you wanna do a roll call vote?
Sure.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Fabulous. Okay. 6.01, career and technical agreement for the center-based technical education programs? Actually, let's see. Some of these we would want to discuss. So is it all right if we go line item by line item? 6.01, any discussion? If not, motion?
Move to approve career and technical education agreements for a three-year agreement cycle commencing August 1st, 2014 with Kansas School for the Deaf as presented.
Second.
All right. Ms. Madden, I have a motion to approve 6.01 by Mr. Parker, seconded by Mike Pollan. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Great. All right, 6.02, temporary construction easement for Olathe West High School. Or 6.03, resinous flooring bids? Can we combine those two, or any discussion?
Then I'll make a motion to grant the temporary easement to Westar Energy as presented, 6.02, and then 6.03, to accept the bids as listed in the bid summary as presented.
Second.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion by Mr. McKeon, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Great. I'm looking at the time, let's see. Okay, let's move to 6.04, bids for Olathe West High School. Dr. Berry, did you wanna have any comments?
I'd like to have John come to the podium and share just a couple of comments.
I just wanted to comment on the kind of revised schedule that you had in your packet this time. We're trying to, a new format to help guide you through the various alternates that are gonna occur, especially on a large high school project. As Greg points out, in some of these packages, it could be to the wall. We'll have to figure out, it'll be a fluid format, but we'll always try to guide you through that. What's the base bid? Here's the alternates we're taking, and the alternates we're not. And if this worked for you, we'll try to continue to do it for the following bid packages.
Continue to do it.
Okay.
Any questions about the bid package? Or the bids?
So once again, some of the items that were rejected, we're just sort of waiting to see how the overall costs come in before we then go back and say, can we afford some of these other things?
Correct. Correct.
That would be, in this case, the extras parking spaces as well as the tennis courts, right?
Correct. We didn't need them right away. We don't have to commit today for those. So we're holding on those till we make sure everything's good on all other packages.
But ultimately, they'll be included? Okay. And those bids remain?
That would only, only would be the case if we were under budget.
Right.
They would be included.
Correct. Or we'd have to seek an alternate source. If the board felt, if the bids didn't come in well throughout the high school and we needed a tennis court, we may have to look to capital outlay to do the tennis court. Parking could generally wait. It would depend on the item.
Is there expiration on the alternate bids?
Generally, a good 60 to 90 days. But oftentimes, you can go back and kind of negotiate, would you stick to your price if we include it in your contract now? But it is, it's only good for that period of time.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'd move to accept the base bid from Epic for work packages number three, site concrete, as well as alternate two for curbs for a north parking lot for a combined cost of $1,850,800. Reject all other alternates related to this work package. And to accept the base bid from O'Donnell &amp; Sons for work package number five, asphalt paving, as well as alternate number two for paving for a north parking lot for a combined cost of $1,744,645. And reject all other alternates related to this work package.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Pollan, just to be clear, were you reading the details of the bid? I wanna make sure we didn't leave any out. Was it adequate? Okay. No, we're good. I just figured out what you were looking at, too late to verify that we had got them all. We have them all covered? Okay. Great. So, Ms. Madden, I have a motion by Mike Pollan, yes, and then seconded by Mr. Parker. Will you do a roll call vote, please? Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
All right. I think we have time to do 7.01. Do you guys agree? We're going to nominate or appoint for the 2014 Kansas Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. And we need a delegate and an alternate delegate. Does anyone want to be the delegate? I believe Mr. Shear had-
Mr. Shear will be there as part of the legislative committee anyway. I think he doubled up on that maybe last year. But we can also have a delegate separate to Mr. Shear in that role if you'd like to.
Anybody? Okay. How about we plug in Mr. Shear? And honestly, he did mention he would be willing and enjoy that. And then I would be happy to offer to be the alternate. So I need a motion to cease nominations. Can I nominate myself, or does someone else need to, for the alternate?
I'd move to cease nominations.
Okay. All right. I need a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion to cease nominations for the KASB Delegate Assembly appointments. And by Mike Pollan, and then seconded by Brent McKeon. Will you do a vote call? Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Great.
I would move to appoint Mr. Shear as delegate and Ms. Felter as alternate delegate to represent Olathe Public Schools at the December 7th, 2014 KAN Association School Boards Delegate Assembly.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Parker, seconded by Dr. Daniels. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Okay. The board policy revisions. This one is solely the data one?
Yes. And we have, again, a few comments to make, so we can either get into that or we can wait till the break.
I prefer waiting till after the break.
Okay. Okay, how about we take a break then and come back at 7:00? Thank you.
From all of our distinguished guests, we're gonna begin our recognitions tonight with a community partner. I'd like to ask Heather Skunover from Community Development to come forward to help with this recognition. Tonight, we are proud to recognize John Dear for their dedicated support to students and programs throughout the district. They are committed to being an adopted school partner with Olathe North High School, implementing the Harvesters Weekend Back Snack Program for 80 students. Employees give their time to pack grade-specific food supplies for students in need and deliver their product to the high school. Additionally, John Dear's staff has provided leadership by doing mock interviews with high school students and promoting youth mentors. The local office also completed a sports equipment drive for The Spot, a middle school after-school program. It is our honor to express sincere appreciation for dedication to the Olathe Public Schools. So with the following from John Dear, please come forward to be recognized. Wendy Ziegler, Annette Corona, and Shirley Schwab. And I'd also like to ask Hannah Miller from Olathe North High School to come forward and assist in recognizing John Dear. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize a student from Olathe East High School, Henry Zimmerman, if you could come forward, along with Principal Bill Weber and band instructor Jeff Smichael. Henry is a senior at Olathe East and has been named to the 2014 National Association for Music Education All-National Concert Band Honor Ensemble. He joined 670 students for a once-in-a-lifetime experience performing on the stage of the Grand Ole Opry in Nashville. And he is one of the best-of-the-best of marching band students nationwide. Congratulations, Henry. And I know your family's here tonight. We'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. Congratulations. And our final recognition tonight is of Allison Lewis from Pioneer Trail Middle School. Allison, if you could come forward, along with Assistant Principal Elaine Carpenter. Allison is a center-based resource teacher and was recognized with the Special Educator of the Year Award from the Kansas Council for Exceptional Children. She was one of five teachers recognized in Topeka recently. Congratulations on this outstanding accomplishment. Thank you. And that concludes our recognitions tonight.
Thank you, Maggie. Will we see you next month? She's hoping not, right? We wish you well on that. I hope everything's great. Okay, we're moving to public comments. And I don't believe we have anyone registered, but we allow time during the board meeting for public comments. If there's anyone here that would like to speak, you could come up to the podium and I can give you the directions. Anyone going? Going? Okay. So we will go back to item 7.02, the board policy revisions. We're talking about the IDEA revisions about data privacy and protection. Dr. Berry, did you have any comments, or?
What was brought to us last month, and so we had some questions and spent some more time this past month talking. And I'm gonna have staff make a couple comments and-
and there might be others sent from the board.
I told Dr. Sulu I want to talk about the student independence and the birds flying off the tree, but she did an awesome job. Allison, who was just here, is one of our special ed teachers. That's a huge promoter, a student independent, so that quick piece. Let me frame quickly where we are tonight from last month, and then we'll make a recommendation and then open this up for some discussion. Last month, we brought you a recommendation for a board policy that meant the intent and compliance of the Student Data Privacy Act. That action item led to some discussion and a chance to table that and spend some time in discussion with Mr. Poland, offering some clarifications, answering some questions, gathering some more information, Mr. Mason and myself. And so, we've made some revisions to the policy and are resubmitting that for your recommendation. Clarified some language. We're very explicit now in the policy about following both the Family Educational Rights, FERPA, as well as the Student Data Privacy Act, and changed some wording that we think offers some better clarification. So, our recommendation at this time is the revised board policy that we've submitted for approval tonight. But we're happy to have more discussion or answer questions.
Mr. Poland, did you have any comments or information you wanted to talk about?
Just a few.
Oh, okay. You're prepared.
I'm just going to pass this out to my fellow board members just because I'm going to cover quite a bit of stuff. And not that I care about it, but just to follow through, you know, obviously, I'm the one that asked the question, so I did spend some time. Want to thank the staff for putting up and tolerating me. Anytime you, you sort of, you know, question a completed document, you do run the risk of being adversarial, and that was not my intent at all. My intent was to explore grounds that may not have been plowed yet or that are continuing to, to change over time. So, I think the following quote sort of summarizes my concerns, and that was basically that "privacy is rarely lost in one fell swoop. It is usually eroded over time, little bits dissolving almost imperceptibly until we finally begin to notice how much has gone." As Dr. Dugan, that wasn't included in your case copy. I added that later on. Meeting on, we did meet about an hour and a half, had a good conversation, cleared a lot of questions up. Results were what was presented, is basically being presented tonight. After that meeting, we had some, Dr. Dugan and I have had some email conversations, and the primary concern there has been my, my concern about the term service provider. To make a long story short, you know, we can go through a lot of the details, but, you know, we do acknowledge that we comply with FERPA. FERPA has been modified, and as Dr. Dugan has explained to me, that there's two sides to every story here. The side that I guess I fall on is the fact that, you know, that it's been relaxed enough to where the termination for, or the term for service provider has been relaxed enough that we're at risk to, of who we share the data with that may be not necessarily a governmental agency. And, you know, since it's been relaxed once, who knows what's going to happen down the line? I just cited, in the example I've given here, cite some examples about how Google has gotten data, and they basically attribute it to the fact that, they got it due to the fact that FERPA has been relaxed. So, you know, while I don't, you know, I appreciate both sides of the fence, and I know that, and once again here, I've, as I've explained to everybody here, I'm not worried about anybody in this room with data. I'm worried about what happens. This is a policy that's going to be long-standing, and I worry about, you know, things that could happen in the future. So, I'm just as concerned there and trying to look down the line as much as I possibly, as we possibly can and say, you know, have we done the best we can do? So, I guess my proposal is if you open up the student policy there, is go to the, like, the fifth paragraph where it says, "Student data may be disclosed to authorized personnel of any state agency." It's on the second, second paragraph, basically, the second page. And I guess my proposal there is to insert the following language. Is there "Student data, student data may be disclosed, comma, upon approval by the Board of Education, USD 233," just to make sure that we're talking about our local Board of Education for approval. To me, what this does is it says, hey, we're not saying we're not going to share the data with the service providers, as said. It's just that what we're saying, what I'm saying is that we haven't defined what a service provider is. That definition may be changed. It's important for us as a board to have public, to me, have public comment, public discussion. Anytime we talk about sharing data, we may go ahead and do it, but I think we need to continue to create a public awareness of what we're going to, what's going to happen with student data. All this is do, does is say, you know, hey, we got to prove it first. That way, it opens it up for discussion. We're not saying we won't approve it. We're just saying, hey, let's discuss it ahead of time. You know, how many student trips do we, do we, you know, approve every meeting? So, this is just another thing, and I bet we don't have more than one or two of these a year at the most. Probably in five years. So, I guess my, my concern there is going down the line, service provider is a very fluid statement, and all I'm saying is give us the local basis here, give us a local control of saying, yes, we will share it. The option to discuss it, discuss it openly and in the public, and then, you know, accept any public comment that we want. So, that would be my recommendation to insert that language in that paragraph, so.
Mr. Poland, can you, can you repeat that?
It's right there. It's on the very last line. It's...
On the last line, on the backside?
On the second page, yes, or backside. In paragraph five, modify the sentence to read, "Student data may be disclosed, comma, and then add the, the phrase, "upon approval by the Board of Education," or whatever we need to say legally to make sure that it's worth referring to us, our local board. And then that's it. So, it's just a few, few words to me that clarify a lot of things and give us more control in the future. So, that would be my amendment to the current...
Well, I...
Go ahead.
Well, I appreciate the sentiment, and I don't disagree with your concern, Mike. I think by modifying it and allowing it to be at the discretion of the board, currently, I think we have a pretty intelligent, reasonable board, but we have no control over individuals who would join the board at a later date, and they could make decisions choosing not to share data that might make no sense and actually be harmful to our district. So, I could not support revision. And the other thing that I would say, because I thought we should have voted on it last month, is that I believe the board hires competent administrators and legal counsel to make decisions for us. We also pay KASB for their legal support and guidance. We've received that. I think we should go ahead, given the information and the guidance that we have present.
And all I would say to that is that we were elected by the public to also, you know, have an intelligent input in anything that our staff shares with us, not to say... And like I said, I, I'm not faulting anybody here, and I'm not changing any of the content of it. All I'm saying is give us the ability to talk about it before it's authorized by somebody. We don't know who's going to be elected. We don't know who, you're right, we don't know who's going to be elected. We don't know who...
You're taking...
Who, who, who the superintendent will be by the board that's elected in the future too, either.
Your policy revision would take the decision away from the individuals who, who administer the policies on a day-to-day basis and place it in the hands of board members who change, and we don't have any control over it. So, I mean, I'm not going to argue with you, so...
Okay. It would, it would, to me, it would recognize the fact that the student data is an important aspect, an important asset of our school district, and it's something that we need to take special precautions for. If we want to come back and modify the, you know, wording can always be changed, and I...
And that would be true with your comments tonight if we...
You're right.
If we voted on it in its current form, and after a year decided it needed modification, it could be done at that time as well, correct? We make revisions to policies on an annual basis.
Anytime.
Well, and Dr. Dugan, the logistics of adding a sentence like that, I mean, let's say tomorrow, a request came in. That one hour until the next board meeting, would that, I mean, the type of requests we're dealing with here, how frequent are they? Would it be feasible to accommodate his request just due to the expediency of the need behind the request?
The way it's written right now, it just talks about student data, releasing student data. So, there's, there's many definitions there. So, if we're talking about, under the Student Data Privacy Act, it really is addressing not FERPA issues. It's addressing the longitudinal data the state maintains, okay? And that what the state can and who the state can share, that big grouping of data. We, as a district, push data and share data to that state database all the time, okay? And so, as written, we'd be having to tell you every time we share student data with the State Department. We've had one data-sharing agreement with the State Department when we wanted data back from the database that wasn't relative to our students, when we were asking and we had to sign an agreement. So, it's not that we have large data-sharing agreements to bring back to the board, but we share student data all the time. We err on the side of getting parental consent for sharing any individual student data, and that's the majority of our data shares. We share it with other schools, but we're allowed to do that under FERPA without parental consent. We share it with service providers when parents ask us to, and we get their consent. So, that's ongoing sharing of student data.
Dr. Dugan...
And that would be every day in this district.
Can you, can you give us a concrete example of what that might look like?
Which one? Any of them?
Any of them.
So, we share, I keep looking to where Rita's sitting, and David Madden's like, "Do not ask me."
[laughing]
And I won't. So, Rita Lyon and that group maintains our student database, right, our student information system. And we're required throughout the school year to share different types of data. So, let me give you one example. We share in the spring is all our student discipline data. So, every day in our building, discipline issues happen, and we record them, and that information gets shared in our system. And then Rita's required to send that information to the state. So, we're sending student data to the state. So, that's a large issue. Oftentimes, though, a parent walks in with a request, "I want you to share student data with a doctor, and I've signed a release for that," and that happens. Or the judicial system's asking for student data because they're doing a custody issue, okay? And we're allowed to provide some data. So, we're sharing student data frequently in all sorts of aspects. The Student Data Privacy Act, though, primarily is talking about the longitudinal database, that big state database that houses student data throughout the state of Kansas. And its intention is to regulate who they share it with in terms of third parties. And it was designed, my opinion, to protect that student data from being shared with a third party that didn't have reason to have it. And that's the main intent of this policy, is to be in compliance with the Student Data Privacy Act. FERPA covers those individual student records and getting parent consent in some of those pieces, not part of tonight's policy.
And I'll just, I'll just add on to that. This, this paragraph does say, "Student data may be disclosed to authorized personnel of any state agency or to a service provider." In, in Senate Bill 367, which is the Student Data Privacy Act, student data does include course grades, grade point average, date of birth, grade level, expected levels of graduations, and the last thing is any other information included in a student's educational record. So, basically, the student, we're saying student data, and student data is defined in KSB or in Bill, Senate Bill Number 367, as any other thing in the student's educational record. So, while the primarily is on, you know, longitudinal data, to me, this is specifically says student data can be shared with a service provider. And like I said, the definition of service provider has been relaxed to such that nongovernmental agencies can request it. You know, maybe not here locally, but, you know, it, it's a possibility, I guess. And, you know, I, I see no problem with us discussing it ahead of time before we sign an agreement. I see how that, I don't see how that damages anything in the operation of the school district, like Dr. Dugan said. It, you know, once or twice a year, it might come up, something. And as far as expediency of it, I don't underst, I wouldn't, if they're doing a study or something like that, I can't understand how anything, you know, couldn't wait a month for anything, any studies that are going to be done, so.
Mr. Poland, I can offer you one piece of clarification that, that may help somewhat. Our district's established guidelines for what student official record is. What we share is the official record. So, I know in, in the act, it says, "are other things in the record." We're really clear in our guidance, what we keep, maintain, memorialize, add into our electronic system of record. And it's very, so, we're not, when we give student record, we only give it eight items. We've recently clarified that process of what constitutes official record, which should offer some assurance as to what exactly is being shared. And there isn't this miscellaneous column in terms of what we consider official record. And again, there are so many pieces to this puzzle, but we've spent some time defining what that is, so it's not nebulous, and parents don't know what it is that constitutes official record. We're pretty tight on what it is we maintain and that which we share.
And I, like I said, once again, I've, and, you know, like I said, anytime you bring up a subject like this, you're acting like the people that are charged with implementing this stuff, don't know what they're doing. And that was not my intent at all. My intent was just to say, hey, this is an evolving and a very fluid field, constantly changing. The ramifications of somebody getting some of our students' data in a, in a, you know, detrimental way, I think is worthy of, of us just saying, on a local level, we want to understand this, where it's going before it goes out. We're probably going to say, yes. So, you know, but let's have that discussion upfront here, not after the fact when something happens. And I see no, you know, I guess I don't understand why, how it could be detrimental to anything we do in the operation of this school district.
Dr. Dugan, the, the policy that we have currently in front of us, that, that was, we, we developed that through, how did we develop this policy?
The Kansas Association for School Boards, it is their recommended policy. That's what we presented last month. We went back and made some revisions to it to clarify some pieces that had come up. We re-asked Kansas Association of School Boards about the changes we made. They understood, feel very strongly, KASB does, that this is the policy school boards should be adopting to be in compliance with the Student Data Privacy Act.
Well, I, Mr. Poland, I appreciate your argument, and I, and trust me, after 15 years on the board, I understand public trust, and I understand being accountable to the public. And, but I believe I was elected to set policy and that we hire a superintendent, and he hires staff to manage that policy. And if the superintendent is not handling it correctly, then it's the board's responsibility to step in. But I don't think we should be micromanaging data. That's why we hire a superintendent, and he hires sta, he or she hires staff. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with the policy, the way it's presented.
Since I'm the only one in, you know, presenting it, I, you know, will defend myself. The things that you said, I guess I'd have to say, I fully agree with the same thing. I don't think that you can say that, you know, you're the only one that, that shares those feelings. So, you know, I, you can see, look at all the things that have been struck out of the KSB's recommendation here. So, to say that, you know, we're micromanaging one little article there, when all I'm asking is to maintain local control here, you know, that, to me, says we've already, we've already changed KSB's recommendation here. So, that, what, what that means is it is subject to change. If, if somebody, if people on the local level want to change it. It's, theirs is a recommendation. My original proposal to Dr. Dugan was to strike, totally strike that word "service provider" in the second line there. And KSB strongly recommends we should keep it in there. So, basically, I said, let's keep it in there. But let's just give us the ability to say, we want to discuss this ahead of time. We want this brought to us. How, how is that micromanaging? You know, once again, we get the, we, how many, you know, student trips do we, you know, approve every night, every board meeting? This, this would happen once or twice a year. Just give us the ability as, you know, I made my, I've made my statement. I think it's, I think we should do it, but...
Well, if I understand Dr. Dugan correctly, in some cases, we probably couldn't even have those discussions because of student data privacy issues, right? In an open meeting? If, if it's a custody issue or something like that?
No, all I'm asking, I'm just saying, tell us, tell us who you're going to give it to, what the purpose is, and then show us what the agreement is. Show, what, show us what data we're going to share, what student data, not the... Show what, show us what data we're going to share, what student data, not the particulars of that student. Or, you know, tell us, you know, are you going to, are you going to share date of birth? Are you going to share gender? Are you going to share blah, blah, blah? So I, you know, no, we're not going to approve each individual task, it's just the, the overall agreement. It's all I am asking for is when they come and they say, "Okay, we want to, we want to do a study and this is the data we want. Here's our service provider agreement," okay? It just gives us a chance to discuss that and understand what to doing before it's, you know, before they have the approval to do it. We'll probably say, "Yes." But then it's up, once again, it's up to the staff to tell us and convince us, that's what we hire the staff for, is to convince us that, yes, it is illegal and a good, you know, use of the student data. And what, and there are going to be some things that are federally or state mandated that, yeah, we don't have a choice on, but at least that can be told to us. And we can understand what the data is and what the purpose is, even though it's said, "Yeah, do it."
Well, I, I understand and I appreciate your concerns, as does Mr. Parker stated earlier. I, however, I'm, I'm confident in the ability of our superintendent to manage this process through staff. And I agree that we, we get into dicey area when we start micromanaging what our staff does.
Ms. Felter, I would like to make a motion that we approve the board policy, IDAE revisions as presented.
Second.
Mr. McKeon? Okay. All right. I have 7.02, the board policy, motion by Dr. Daniels, seconded by Mr. McKeon. Would you do a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
We have to have something in the state, so I'll say, "Yes."
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Pollan, thank you for your vigilance. And I think we all hear your heart. And I think where we just have a little disagreement is, does the current policy that we just approved handle it to a level that's considered vigilant? And, and I would say it does, so thank you very much. Mrs. Madden, can you note that, Rick, we are glad to have you. Joined the meeting at, what, seven, 10, seven?
Thirteen.
Seven thirteen. You did it. Thank you. Thank you. We're glad to have you here, Rick. All right. Let's move to future action items. That would be 8.01 through 8.14. Anybody want to talk about anything? Dr. Berry, do you have anything to talk about in here?
I don't believe so.
We have an audit report. The hard copy was given to us by Mr. Hutchison for review in the next month. The auditors will be here for the presentation. So thank you for that. We also have the capital outlay resolution. Make sure you get to look at that. Anything else?
Can Dr. Berry or Mr. Hutchison kind of just give us an outline of what the thought process is on 8.1, 8.13, the architectural engineering request for qual-, qualifications for Mill Creek Center renovations? This has been on, on our plate and on our table for quite some time. And I understand that we've been busy with a lot of other projects, but it would be nice to see it move forward.
Yes. We have, are doing a request for qualifications with architects that are on our pre-approval list and have sent those out. We're really looking for some expertise in renovating old buildings. If you, whether historic or not, it does take a, a special talent to do that. We'll conduct interviews and bring our recommendations to the board in December. We really need that architect onboard. We have kind of preliminary ideas about the scope of what we would like to use the building for programmatically, but really need them there to help guide through what makes sense, what does not, from that list.
So once we hire, once we decide on an architect, then we would have some type of timeline as when we could expect some-
We can definitely put a schedule together then.
Other than just the metal building?
Right. Most buildings, you say, "Here's the scope of what we want to do," and the architect designs it. We really need them there helping us with the scope. That would be a tough fit for this building. Why don't you go with this other option?
So that's going to be at the December board meeting, that we're going to have those?
To select the architect to conduct that work for us. So I would say it would take them 30, 60 days to come up with, here's a master plan of what makes the best sense and.
Okay, so, so in December, we're just authorizing-
Hiring the architect.
For the RFP, for the request?
You'll have the architect in December. You just won't have the plan of what's going to happen to the building.
How many firms are we going out to?
I'm sorry?
How many firms are we going out to?
I believe it was six that received it.
Mostly local?
Uh, yes.
I, I don't mean to be critical and just anxious. It's kind of like the career and technical building. It always got pushed back and pushed back and eventually we, we got it. So this is part of the 2013 bond or the '07 bond?
No, neither one. There's no, there was no money.
Capital outlay?
Yes.
Okay. So another thing that's held us up is money and capital outlay? Well, that's good to know that, you know, the public asked me about it and I say, "Yeah, yeah," and I, but it's, 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 it's not only a time issue, but it's also a money issue.
Correct.
So this fall, August, was the first budget we've had with the eight mills of capital outlay and the special aid from the state. So we're in a position where we can look at-
So bottom line, we could say to the public, you just didn't have the money previous to now, because all of the other capital outlay funds were allocated for other projects in schools. Is that a fair?
It is. Step one was remove the metal building.
I'm sorry?
Step one was removal of the metal building, which it has been removed. Now, now we need architectural help to go with step two.
Is the funding we're talking about just for the architectural part of it? Since we don't know how much it's going to cost?
The funding, I, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Dr., Mr. Parker asked about the funding. Where's it coming from? Are we talking about funding for the whole facility? Do we do it? Or are we just talking about currently for the, the expense of that?
Currently, it's just for the, it would be for the architect. And, and we'll be looking for ways to fund whatever they come up with. Once they determine, we work together on a scope, a design, we'll have a budget, we'll determine how can we finance that design.
So that's-
Yes.
We don't know where that's coming, the file.
There are some plans that had domino effects to them until we settled in on that plan where we say, "Well, if we use it for this function, then maybe some programs from North Lindenwood could come out of that program. We sell that, we get some money to go toward this." I mean, there are various ways there, but there is some aging facility money that it would qualify for, because it is definitely an aged facility. So we have, we have the resources to put the plan together. This is just the step to get started.
Resources, as in money?
Yes.
Okay.
That's exciting. Okay, you received written information, the September 2014 Head Start Director's Monthly Report. And we will move on to topics for discussion. Board members have the opportunity to bring up topics for discussion that are not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything?
I'd like to bring up a little bit of the background from the Legislative Committee Just the direction that we're going, especially since I know, and I apologize for, for coming in late, but I know that we've got delegate assembly that'll be coming up in December?
December.
Yes. In December.
You're the delegate, by the way.
I'm the delegate. Thank you all.
That'll teach you to mess.
Appreciate that. Okay? Well, that's all, that's fine. Well, I wanted to, I wanted to just take a few minutes and I, I emailed out some information to everybody to give you a little bit of the Legislative Committee Report, but I wanted to kind of bring it up in public also and to talk a little bit about it. Because what this is the opportunity to do is, this is, these are school board members across the entire state of Kansas. They all come together and we work with KASB to come up with the legislative agenda of what we're looking for going forward into the next school year. And we work very, very diligently and very hard, because there are a lot of different things that we wanted to talk about. Specifically, a couple of the different topics were, number one, is just to get a better understanding and, and language together, a little bit about where we're going academically. You know, you, we've all heard, you know, the, the college and career-ready standards, we've heard about the Common Core standards, we heard about the Rose capacities and things such as that. This is our opportunity to really sit down and talk about this and say, "How does all this work together?" And the Legislative Committee came together very nicely and, and put together a paragraph, and I'm going to read that here in just a moment. But then also, we'll talk a little bit about the, the report in all, as far as how we put together some things for standards for success, the funding for success, which is going to be extremely important for us going forward, and the local leadership for success. And those are the three main topic areas that we've talked about. And these are the things that are going to come in front of the delegate assembly in December. But I mainly, the main thing I wanted to kind of, and I don't want to take a lot of bit, a lot of time with this, but I thought it was very important, because it was interesting how we pulled all these together. And so the priority resolution, the successful students of Kansas way, and the main goal for this, and I'm going to read it just right off the report itself, is to meet the Kansas Constitution's charge of providing for the intellectual, educational, scientific, and vocational improvements of Kansas students through a system of public schools. We endorse the following to realize the Rose capacities through the implementation of the college and career-ready standards and the achievement of the goals outlined in the Foresight 2020 Plan. And so I thought that really made a lot of sense, because again, trying to get that understanding of what does the Rose capacities do for us, and that was the Supreme Court and, and the Kansas State Board of Education came together and said that these are going to be the capacities that we want to be able to teach our students to, which I think personally, I like the fact, because it's broadened it out. It's not just math skills and reading skills. It really broadens us out to cultural skills and things such as that. We're going to tie that back into together to be able to pull this together, and we're going to also, with the implementation of the college and career-ready standards themselves. And that's what we're teaching to. That's the curriculum that we've been working towards, which is really Kansas's way of saying, saying the Common Core. It's basically in the same direction, but we wanted to customize it, because we want the public to understand that the Common Core is not something academically is being pushed to us. We are the ones that own the curriculums. And that's why we, we titled in such a way as being called out the Kansas College and Career Ready Standards, so that everybody understands that this is not something being enforced on us. This is how we want to teach our students to be ready for their future, and that's the direction we're trying to go. So a couple of different things on the standards for success. Specifically, some of the things that we talk about is just the student expectations, how we're going to be able to evaluate them, the financial education, effective educators, things such as that. This report is out at the KSAB's website, and you're welcome to go out there, and I encourage you to go out there and take a look at this, and look at some of these different topics, because it really is important how we pull this together. It is interesting and a challenge sometimes, because again, KSB has to work for all the educators across the entire state of Kansas. So when you're looking at Eastern Kansas and Western Kansas, not all the time do we always agree upon everything of what we want to do with our students, how we want to do this. So this, I really do feel was a nice collaboration effort to be able to pull this together and be able to present it in such a way. The funding piece of this, especially with some of the different things that have been going on with elections and things such as that, funding is going to be vitally important. And obviously, that's one of the top priorities of making sure that we are stating and putting out there that we fully expect the state to fund everything in the manner that we expected and what we put forward. So it's going to be very, very vitally important from that standpoint. And then just the local leadership for success. And I really do feel that that's important to make sure that we continue to work with legislators, talk with them and move forward with that. But I wanted to just take just a couple of minutes just to be able to bring that up. I'm not going to go into any more depth, but I do encourage you, like I said, go out to the KASB website, pull this up. And these, this is the resolution that we're going to put in front of the delegate assembly in December. If anybody has any questions or if they have any challenges or changes that they would like to make, since I am the delegate then, bring those to me, so that, so that we can have them prepared and bring them up prior to the voting in December.
Thank you for sending those out. Appreciate it.
Well, we had discussed, we can put a link to that document in the agenda, you know, board comment portion, so they can go to board docs also, right?
Yes, or we can put it on legislative page and make that link from the website.
That'd be great, if we can do something like that.
Thank you, Rick. Thanks for your hard work on that. Okay, and any other topics for discussion? If none, I wanted to take a second and talk about a group that I, there's a suicide prevention coalition in Johnson County, and it's kind of under the radar, but it's a fabulous group of people from all walks of life and medical, police, educators, administrators, moms, dads, coming together to address a real issue in our community. In 2012, it came to everybody's alarming attention that suicide rate, suicide rates in our county had increased by over 90%. And so, you know, all the bells and whistles started going off, and I'm sure every one of you has had some impact on your life by someone who has died due to suicide. So this group got together and just started saying, "We, we've got to do more, we've got to do more." So they came to give us a report on their accomplishments, and, and statistically, it seems like they've already made a really great impact on suicide rates in Johnson County. I mean, this is local folks. And I just wanted to tell you what their goals are, and then we will have this document in the conversation, in the topics for discussion section on board docs or anywhere else you want. But they had three really concrete goals that seem to be broad enough that they're meeting the need. They are communicating based on research-informed data. So in the latest that they have is 2012, so, you know, it's always a little behind. But they provide training to community and clinical service providers on the prevention of suicide and related behaviors. One of those is the assist training. I don't know if anybody's heard of it before, and they also have medical training for mental health. The assist training, they've got one program coming up, I believe it's like January in the twenties range. It's a two-day program, and it's free, because we got a grant for it. So it's fabulous. And then they promote suicide prevention at the core, as a core component of healthcare services. Well, this prevention group, you might be saying, "Why are you talking about that here, you know, the school district?" Well, we've experienced losing students due to suicide. And so I am very grateful that we've all come together to meet a very real need, you know, and there's not necessarily tax dollars going towards it. It's like, okay, we've got to do something while we're figuring out how to get legs under this and stop deaths by suicide together. So I encourage you guys to look it up and, and look at the statistics and see the encouraging trend. And I want to say thank you for the team that put this all together and is working on it. Okay. Superintendent comments, 11.01. What do you have, Dr. Berry?
Just a few comments tonight. Even though we think the election season ended Tuesday, we start the next election season, and we are already on the trail of presenting about the local option budget election that will be a mail-in ballot in January of 2015. We have prepared, staff has prepared, a short PowerPoint that we use when we go out to groups. We have over 80 meetings scheduled that will be going out to present. We have a short PowerPoint and we have a short video within that. We can either show you that video tonight, about two hour, two minutes and 45 seconds, or we can send you a link. It's your preference, what you'd like to-
Like to see?
Like to see it? Let's fire it up. As you know, as a school district, we can only inform people in our community and educate them on the facts. We can't go out and tell them how to vote. There is a group in our community who is providing some of that support in terms of signs and postcards that will encourage people to vote yes for this. So let's look at the video and then we'll see where we are.
The state of Kansas recently gave school districts the option of increasing local funding by 2%, which the Olathe School District has done. This funding allows the Olathe Public Schools to continue its commitment to high-quality learning for all of its students. Now the state is requiring all districts to ask voters to keep this funding in place to maintain the excellence in our schools. In the Olathe Public Schools, we pride ourselves on the high-quality staff we have hired, the schools we have built, and most of all, on the outstanding students and graduates we have nurtured and developed. It is a pride we know that is shared by our parents, staff, students, and patrons. How do we know that the pride is shared? A recent district-wide community survey showed that more than 90% of respondents gave the district an A or B for overall performance. The same survey also identified what the district's priorities should be for the future. It's not a coincidence that the funding we're already accessing is going to support what our patrons value the most. Keep moving forward is the clear message from our patrons, and that is what we in the Olathe Public Schools strive to do each day. In every school and classroom across the district, our outstanding staff members dedicate[1705.51] themselves to helping our students experience success. This dedication shows in the awards and recognitions our staff receive each year. Our staff members love what they do, and it shows. Keeping our class sizes at a good level allows our staff the one-on-one and small-group student interaction that is vital for academic success. Take a closer look in our classroom, and you will see an emphasis on technology. Students at the elementary level have access to iPads, part of the Olathe School District's Two-to-One Elementary iPad Initiative, that allows our students additional access to technology, as well as the opportunity to collaborate daily with the district's state-of-the-art curriculum guiding the way. Good class sizes, current technology that goes hand-in-hand with the newest curriculum, and the best teachers in the state. That's what you'll find in the Olathe Public Schools, and that's why we need to keep moving forward. Please cast your vote in the upcoming mail-in election on the continuation of the local option budget funding level. A yes vote will not increase your taxes.
So again, two minutes, 45 seconds, I think, is what it is, with a short PowerPoint that has a few more questions that are answered. We have a handout that we give, and we are in and out of a civic group in 10 minutes or less, so, but again, well over 80 that have been scheduled. The, the video that you just saw is a Maggie Communications Department production, so it's nice to be able to do that in-house. So again, January 7th ballots will go out and they have to be returned by January 27th. All Johnson County schools, I believe, except Spring Hill maybe, are going on the same date. And so we are taking advantage of a few joint presentations when possible. The Overland Park Chamber will have a presentation by all of us, all the superintendents, which is kind of scary, I think, but, and so we will get a joint resolution of, of support, hopefully, from them, because we obviously have land and schools in the Overland Park. As well as the Greater Kansas City Chamber will have a joint presentation by Johnson County superintendents for hopefully an endorsement. We'll be recognizing, I believe, our partner next month, the Olathe Public Schools Foundation, but I just wanted to again, give them kudos for putting on a nice breakfast in terms of raising $106,000 from the ticket sales, which will come back to our kids and our programs and our staff. So that's the really positive part that I'd like to report. Rick gave the legislative platform for KASB that was finished up, from him going again on the Saturday and giving his time to be a part of that group from across the state. Pretty important that we have representation there. We'll, we'll now take that in our local Board of Education committee met at the same time and have tweaked our platform that we'll be bringing to you next month in terms of the things that we are looking for in the new legislative session. Legislative session will start January 13th, so it's not too far away. Rick had already mentioned about the convention, and I would also remind you as well, if you still think you might be able to have that on your calendars, it's December 5 through 7 in Overland Park. Again, the first day of that on a Friday, a tour will be offered for convention goers from across the state that can sign up and they can tour Olathe Schools in the afternoon. A short, you know, version, we have several things planned through Dr. Banakowski that will take them on the tour. And then the last thing I'll mention is kind of breaking news that we got today, but Kristi Whitman, who is counselor at Indian Creek Elementary School, was named the Elementary Kansas Counselor of the Year.
That's great.
Pretty special award that, from all across the state, all the elementary counselors to be the Counselor of the Year, so pretty exciting. We had a couple other recognitions of staff there as well, so we will obviously have her come to a meeting and recognize her.
Very good. Okay, do we need an executive session?
We do.
How long?
30 minutes, please. I think we can start with that.
All right. I would entertain a motion and ask for 30 minutes in executive session.